I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have, before we adopt the agenda, we have a mission under closed business or the item six A, airport obstruction removed. Are there any other changes to the agenda? If not, entertain a motion. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passing unanimously. All right, now we have special presentations and appearances. If I don't butcher this too badly, we have Biana Casate over at Caballo Gallery here to speak. And if you would prefer to take your mask off, would you not have?
I would love that, thank you. You won't be able to hear me. So I was really not sure. They haven't given me very good instructions, but just to introduce myself.
What's your business?
Caballo Gallery. I am a custom framer, have been custom framing for 30 years. I do restoration. My location is in Gordonsville. And I am on the advisory board of tourism. I do all kinds of things. I am the co-founder of Main Street Events in Gordonsville. We stage free public events, monthly first Friday music events, and also art markets on Saturdays, four times a year. Those are free public events that we came up with last year just to get the community back involved in downtown Gordonsville.
Where in downtown are you actually located?
I am at 117 West Main, South Main Street. So I'm next to the restaurant, the closest restaurant.
Very good. All types of painting man or?
I do everything, yeah. I've been doing it a long time, so fairly creative.
Very good.
Where did you learn this at?
In Charlottesville at a place called Thimmin Victorious, and that was one of the oldest places in Charlottesville. I was an art student, and so when you leave art school, there's not much you can do.
Very good. Thank you very much. Pleasure meeting you.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right, next is a consent agenda. Action.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passing unanimously. Next is new business, Better Support for Homestead Building Systems Aethid Grant. Rose.
Mr. Chairman, the media actually has a follow-on meeting after our joint session, so Rose over there. So essentially, this is a request from Homestead Building Systems. They were awarded Aethid Grant, which is a performance-based grant, one component of which relates to the number of new jobs that they provide. They did work diligently to provide those jobs, but with the employment situation in our community being very challenging and COVID, they weren't able to meet their job target within the agreement constraints. So this is a request to grant them the 15-month extension. They met their other targets, so staff supports agreeing to give them another 15 months to try to meet those targets.
Okay.
How many jobs were they short?
I believe what it was 20% of their total growth, they were short.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine positions.
Yeah, so it looks like about 30 because they're 52% of the goal as of now.
Right, and they have been very, very active in trying to recruit these positions. County administrator said they've met and surpassed all of their other goals. Entertained motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passing unanimously. All right, next Amanda would come forward, approve the award contract to First Arriving for a media and recruitment campaign for volunteer fire and rescue agencies. Good evening, Amanda.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. In January of this year, we released a solicitation looking for proposals from firms to help us develop and coordinate a comprehensive recruitment campaign for volunteer fire and rescue agencies. We received 11 responses and with a selection committee of Jeff Madonka, Chief Moore, and Whit Jacobs, we reviewed the proposals and interviewed the top two firms. We felt that First Arriving was, they were subject matters. They knew a lot about volunteer fire and rescue. All of them either have family members or they are part of volunteer associations. Their strategy captured an all-around approach towards the intended goal and achievement that we're looking for. If you ever have a chance, check out their website and you can see some of their projects that they've done. And they're really, really good company. Staff recommends that we approve, we are asking to approve a contract with First Arriving for one year with the possibility of four additional one-year renewals. Funding for this initiative has been approved by FEMA through a staffing for adequate fire and emergency response safer grant.
Where is this company out of?
They are out of, I believe it's in Virginia. Thinking like near Vanessa.
Very good.
But they were, they really had a lot of creative ideas and they just really caught our attention.
Any other questions for Amanda?
A lot of these safer grants require any follow-on support after the grant is over? Does this one?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, all right.
Entertained motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'm adding this to approve it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passing unanimously.
Thank you very much, Amanda.
Thank you.
All right, I guess we get this next one too.
Yes.
The board contract to Sergeant Corporation for landfill cell two construction.
In February, we solicited bids from vendors to construct cell two at the landfill. We received four responses. After the bid opening and reviewing the responses, Sergeant Corporation was the apparent lead bidder. I have attached the bid results. You can see the other companies that submitted bids. We're asking that the board authorize us to enter into a contract with Sergeant Corporation for the construction of cell two under DEQ permit 566. Funding has been allocated in the project bond L1005 expansion of landfill cells.
And I will add that there are a few items that were missing from the memo, so I apologize for that. First is letter recommendation from Draper Aiden stating that they have reviewed all the bids and they agree that Sergeant Corporation is a low bidder and is adequate contractor for the expansion. And also, there are two task orders associated with the project from Draper Aiden. The first is for quality control assurance services for $124,000 and for base and survey services for $65,000. So as part of this, we are also asking for authorized staff to get those two task orders from the same funding source.
Those are task orders under existing contracts?
Under, yes, under the existing annual contract, yes, sir.
Item three is labeled tire trailer area.
Yes, sir.
That cost is from bids from 169 to 314,000. What is that, what is, what are they doing to that area specifically to make it a separate item?
So that was just for bidding purposes so we could identify a cost. If we ran into a budget issue, we could isolate that cost. But essentially, what you are, if you're familiar with the landfill, we have all the existing concrete, metal, all the brush piles, entire trailer are in the footprint of the cell two construction, so we have to relocate all that. So we are going to put a retaining wall pretty much behind where the public use site is to put that site, that trailer in the ground, so it's a little more user-friendly and safer for citizens to dispose of tires.
I mean, again, the bids are from 169 to 314, but I guess what I'm trying to find out is what are we spending in the winning bid is 210,000. I'm just curious to know what's costing 210,000 dollars?
It's a large retaining wall. There's a lot of site work associated with that. I'm not sure we didn't itemize the, or break down that cost in the.
It's kind of like they're putting in like a ramp room to be able to back into it.
Is this going to be permanent site that never gets moved again?
Yes.
When you say retaining wall, is that going to actually be a, above the trailer wall or are they still going back up to a trailer? How will they be offloading?
So there will be a pull-off area for vehicles to pull off to the side of the access road and the, there will be a three-foot railing and the tire trailer will be even with that railing so that they'll just roll tires over.
So this is concrete work?
Yes, yes.
So if you back your truck up to this, your truck is going to be pretty much level with the, with the top of this rail that you're speaking of?
Yes.
Where is this in relation to the, where the trailer is now?
So it'd be directly, I guess directly east of that. So if you recall where we parked our roll-off trucks and our front-end trucks would be right behind there, kind of tucked in or the tree line and the road.
So that, you think that's a location that can be committed to this for the long term?
Yes, it's outside of any of the future sales footprints.
All right, that's what it needed.
All right, we entertain the motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Moore heading here up for the resolution of unanimous consent to the call of Green County from RSA.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly happy to defer to any member of the RSA board who wishes to add any comments, but at this point, we've had a bit of back and forth between the three jurisdictions who are members with several different attempts to resolve an ongoing concern of Green counties that they are unable to proceed with some pretty significant capital projects under the current arrangement. They have reached a conclusion that they would like to depart RSA, the Rapidan Services Authority. Accordingly, what has been put in motion is a signaling by the three jurisdictions of their position on this matter. The Green Board has adopted a resolution indicating that they would like to be let out of the agreement, and now it is ripe for both Orange and Madison to express their opinions. I understand that Madison will undertake this question this evening, and it is also before us. Once this were to happen, there would still be a number of other procedural steps necessary, including public hearings and some unwinding of business arrangements and potential approval of bondholders. So this would not be the final step by any means, but would be part of initiating the process to let Green out. I would also note that if that does happen, there would need to be an agreement between Madison and Orange as to what a reconstituted or continued RSA would look like in terms of representation because the code requires a minimum of five members as it stands now. The RSA board consists of six, so two, three members, if they were to depart, we'd leave four and we'd need to replace at least one member without, well, with that, I'm certainly open to questions and would invite additional commentary from the current RSA board members and current chairman if y'all are so inclined.
Mr. Frank?
I would just say that I would be glad to support this and get us down to RSA of two counties with Madison and Orange. I would figure that, given that Orange has like 5,000 customers and Madison has a couple hundred, that the reconstituted board would consist of three Orange County representatives, probably an additional one from the other end of the county that has RSA facilities down there. And we go ahead and agree to this withdrawal. At that point, once the, once the agreements of the, of all three counties were involved, we've got to deal with the Virginia Resource Authority with regard to bonding, and that there's a whole process for division of assets, division of liabilities. And at that point, once that has been divided, then we, we come back to the, RSA board will have to have a vote on this as well to approve this process, and then we come back to the counties for final approvals.
All right, at this point, the one thing I would like to put into this as well, since I've been in communications with the chair from the Madison Board of Supervisors, and he has stated that they are in full agreement of doing such, I would like to add into this motion that the board would be comprised of a majority of Orange County representatives.
Are you adding that to the resolution?
Or Mr.?
I'm not sure we need it at this stage.
Well, I don't know that, I'll defer to the, to the legal advisers to whether we want to make it a part of this. I want it understood that that's what it is. And I would ask, Tom, how would you see this working out? If Green leaves, you're left with Madison and Orange, they've each got two on there, they have to appoint a fifth. How do we, how would we, how do we get there if, if, let's say, you know, it was a two-two vote? How do you ever get to that? Who gets that third or that fifth?
Well, a lot of it would depend on whether this is unraveled by an agreement and Madison agrees to a fifth vote. If it's unraveled by a court, I don't see a court giving Orange control. The court's going to say since 1969, equal representation and I'm not going to change it.
It can't be equal representation.
Five is the minimum. We have six now. A court could give one to Madison and one to Orange and leave it at three-three. So, you know, a lot of that's going to hinge on if it goes through the court proceeding or the judge does. Whether the judge is going to take it upon himself to reconfigure control, when control's been equally shared since 1969, I would think a judge might be hesitant to do that, but I don't think for sure.
Well, Madison County has stated that they are, have no issues with Orange having the majority vote.
That's what I'm saying, as long as they're raising agreements, no problem.
Yeah, their concern is a very justified concern that they want to make sure that they have some relatively good assurance of being representative, but they are willing for us to have the majority of board representation.
I think their concern was that we wouldn't be moving them off of the RSA for at least five years.
Right.
So a memorandum of understanding that would do that, that gave them assurances that they can either stick with RSA, look at alternatives, and see if they wanted to go elsewhere. But that five years gave them plenty of opportunity.
The concern is the majority.
What I'm, what I'm trying to avoid here is a situation that would just be an incredible mess and not calling into any question anyone's office. Fact of the matter is, this is going to be a several months-long process. I'm reasonably certain this is not going to be buttoned up before the elections in a little bit. So who knows who's going to be on the Madison County Board of Supervisors next year. Again, I'm not calling anybody's honesty into question here or saying I don't trust so-and-so, but Orange needs to have certainty as far as I'm concerned, that they are going to hold a three-to-two advantage because otherwise, this, I don't think is viable.
I agree with you.
If we, if we don't have an agree, we will be in a two-to-six minority, two-to-four minority if the, if the RSA continues as currently configured.
I don't understand.
Well, I mean, if we don't, if RSA doesn't break up, I mean, if we don't allow Green to go, then there are six.
We're concerned moving forward with Green County leaving, that we have an assurance that we will have majority representation.
And I don't know how to add, I don't know if this, I mean, we could agree to a subject to that, but I'm not sure what, what that condition.
Could we not add a, even in the resolution, add another, now therefore be resolved that this contingent on, within 30 days of this date, that there's an agreement executed between Orange and Madison that it be, you know, I don't know, I don't have the right words.
Okay, so we could, we could, we're talking about the MOU between Madison and, and Orange, so if we could have a contingent upon a satisfactory agreement between Orange and Madison?
I think as far as Orange is concerned, where Mr. White was at would be the appropriate thing. Madison's concerned about the MOU. We're concerned about majority representation.
Well, is that doable, Tom?
We all could, I think you want a resolution, so.
So, so your thought is another, another being resolved?
Another big resolve that, Tom, does that cause any problem with, is Green County going to look at that and say, well, wait a minute, they didn't really vote for this because there's this official embedded in it that now Madison has got, they've got to work out their MOU before, you know, I mean, they're.
Well, a contingent resolution is not an agreement. It's a contingent agreement, so it's not an agreement, so.
What I'm hearing us say is that it is contingent upon a very important aspect of this, which is the makeup of the board, being three from Orange, two from Madison.
Right.
Is that not?
Well, that'll get two alternatives. We either got a Madison-Orange board or we have a Madison-Orange-Green board.
Like, we, it's not, I mean, we've got equal representation now. It's three counties. That's, that's fine. That's probably not perfect, but it's, I mean, probably in a, in a 100% fair world, maybe Orange would have four and Green would have three and Madison would have two. You got to represent the, okay, but this was started back in 1969. I can't do anything about that. But this, this new agreement is going to be between Orange and Madison. Madison's got, what, 200 customers?
Right.
We've got, I think it's just 5,000?
Yep.
I mean, clearly to me, Orange needs to be the majority vote here. And, and I, but I do understand that Madison clearly wants an MOU saying, if you're the majority, you're not going to, you know, throw us out the, you know, on the shoulder of the road. So if we can pass a contingent and if Madison can pass a contingent, that, that's fine. I'm, I'm fine with it. But I would hate to enter into this and have this be, I mean, I don't know how final this is. If we were to just pass this tonight, would that be irrevocable?
Well, if you pass it tonight, Madison passes it tonight, then there's a vote of the RSA board as well. And then it's all.
And the RSA board, that's just a simple majority.
RSA board is a simple majority.
And at that point, we could have the MOU. In fact, I would, I would hold off on having a vote of the RSA board until the MOU is in place.
So, Tom, is it legally defensible for us to, defendable, I should say, not defensible, for us to put a, a contingent in here that this is, this is based on an MOU with Madison County?
You certainly put that in there, yeah, somewhere.
I don't like the way you say that. We can put anything in there, I realize that.
I'm just concerned that Green's going to.
We put a lot of gibberish in there, but.
I'm just concerned that Green is going to consider this, this is a contingency and they're not really, not really motivated to do this.
Well.
What's, what is Green's other option? They're the ones that want out.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really not going to hole up anything. It really isn't.
Because I don't want to be a fairly drawn-out process.
Yeah, I mean, it's, this process would be wound up, we certainly, I think, would have an MOU with Madison well before RSA's.
Mr. White, would you like to make a comment or a motion? Well, I actually would like to ask a question. Can you characterize the risk to Orange if we do not make this a contingent?
Well, actually, a closed session item, maybe it'd be better to discuss this enclosed than.
Okay. We will defer this.
Or until after close.
Until after close, all right. All right, next is item six A, old business, airport obstruction removal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really, it says, I explained in the memo I sent to you yesterday, which is, Mr. Hildbrand's been working diligently on supervising the contractor MTM Enterprises. They were the successful low bidder in the amount of 298,375. The engineer's estimate was significantly higher, 520,000. So we have significant grant funds available beyond the contract award. It was noted at the time that it's likely that things will change. You do an aerial survey and then you get on the ground and you just find a lot more, real situations that you need to address. So the sort of big idea here is the more we can do now with the contractor that we have, the less we would have to deal with somewhere down the road. And so with willing property owners asking for more trees to be removed or additional trees to be trimmed, provided they're within the scope and the intent of this contract, and with the concurrence of the FAA, it makes the most sense to award a change order. And Kurt could have done this if it were small amounts, but because of the size, really needs to come back to the board. So we're asking for the board's concurrence to, to issue this change order at 198,750, which makes the total amount 4,971,25, which again is within, within the original engineer's estimate and it's at no cost to the county. It's all federal funds.
But the more important thing is that FAA five is into this.
That is correct.
Because we don't have, we're not spending our money.
I'll send a question.
And Kurt can certainly answer questions. He's been on the ground there. It's a quick contract, 60 days, so that's why we kind of had to add this at the last minute.
Yeah, your memo, Kurt, says that several landowners have requested to have some trees removed. The numbers, end of that paragraph, the 150 conditional wants to be removed, is 150 trim. Are the, are the, are the landowners okay with that or is, or they're two groups? Or part of the 150, the landowners have agreed to, and another part of the 150, we need to? How does that, how does that?
All this is, this is, all the landowners are in agreement with the number of trees.
Okay, the new number?
Yes.
The larger number?
Yes.
Okay, that was, that was, I thought that's what you were saying, but I wanted to read. Any other questions, comments? Entertained motion?
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Alright, uh, same thing for Department Director of Constitution, Office of Records, uh, Mr. Lashmore, having terminal.
No comments.
Mr. Voorhees?
No additional comments?
Mr. Chairman. More comment? Let's start with, uh, Mr. Fern.
I mean, I don't have any comments.
I know.
No, I don't have any comments.
Okay. Mr. White?
I've already all done it as well.
And Mr. Marshall?
Uh, love it.
Alright, so, that might be it first. Alright, informational items, then, uh, appointments to board's commissions.
I would like to make our appointment to, uh, Jack Ricketts to serve as replacement for Mr. Soderquist on the Piedmont work force.
Uh, you've talked to him for years.
Is, uh, is Mr. Rickett going to serve?
Yeah. After he left the room.
It's ours, but, uh, no, I, I, uh, I'm, I'm with somebody who's willing to try to shake things up and I think Jack is the kind of guy that'll do that.
He, he's very interested, I know.
I know, so, uh, he's, uh, I, I started that as soon as I saw this and it leave and I mentioned it to, uh, to Rose. She thought again that it was a good idea, so, whatever, it's what it is.
Very good, all in favor? Are there any other appointments? Alright, all in favor of Mr. Rickett?
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
Good, passes unanimously. Next would be, uh, our calendar. I don't believe we, do we have any additions to that, Allison?
There's a new calendar in front of you. Um, the only change was the second, um, planning commission meeting of the month. Um, and then you do have a, a calendar item on your agenda to schedule the public hearing for Piedmont's processing, which receives planning commission recommendation at its April first meeting.
Can we, or simply schedule?
Um, yes, sir, the students weekend schedule, that is your first meeting in May on the eleventh.
Alright, all right, the third one? Let's schedule for that. With all of that being said, Mr. Lashmore, if you could leave the information.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss a closed meeting of following matters. Consultation of legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation with such consultation or open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of public bodies concerning RSA. Consultation of legal counsel employed retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring revision of legal advice by such counsel concerning RSA, zoning ordinances and legal staff. And whereas pursuant to sections two point two, thirty seven eleven, A seven A eight of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in a closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved, and Board of Supervisors of Orange County does hereby authorize discussion of four stated matters in closed meeting, need this motion?
So, a.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're now.
Cool, we're ready to recess.
You're good to go, just go ahead and turn off your camera and your microphone.
Quick review and I appreciate her being here.
Yes ma'am. Cole, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Can you go ahead and start the live stream again?
Yep, y'all should be good to go now.
Thank you. We're ready. Ready for me to read? All right, members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, where the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. Crozier.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
And Mr. Marshall. Five zero.
All right, we're back in open session and we will continue our discussion. Closed meeting regarding RSA.
Reference, Mr. Chairman, that was item five D on the agenda.
Yes, thank you. We have a motion on the table at this point. Motion been made, okay. If there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion then.
Mr. Chairman, I remember that we adopt a resolution to consent to withdrawal of Green County Rapid Act Service Authority. Motion reading as you see in your packet, with the very end, the addition of words to this effect, subject to Orange and Madison entering into an agreement to configure the RSA board with an Orange County majority after Green's departure. Agreement must be completed within 45 days, period.
Very second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Well, I mean, yeah, so I think, you know, there's been a lot of going back and forth here and there's a lot of, you know, exposed nerves in all three counties. RSA was around for over half a century, and to a degree, kind of, outlived its usefulness. Usualness being that which is decided upon by the elected bodies of each county. Green County would like to leave, and I don't believe that we should hold Green County hostage, so I vote that we, I'm going to vote to let them out. It is important, however, that addition that Mr. White included, that's important to the resolution because, Orange County has, my understanding, about 5,000 RSA customers, Madison County has 200. And therefore, Orange County needs to have a three to two majority, so, it's not a delaying motion, this is simply a reality that, that once we vote to the lottery to leave, that it's not the end of the process, it's the beginning of a very long process that's going to play out for months.
Is that a second on Mr. White's motion?
Yeah, I seconded the motion, now we're in discussion.
Yes, I just, okay. Been a long day, so.
Mr. Chairman, I would also like to add that the addition to the motion is, addition to the resolution is important because, I feel very strongly that we do not want to leave open the question of having a board comprised of equal number of representations, that it's possible to have tie votes on any material issues, so the logical breaking of that tie possibility largely due to Mr. Johnson's comments in terms of his relative size of the customer base, and to favor Orange having the majority.
And I, I forgot one thing I wanted to add, which is, I know Madison County is very concerned about their 200, 200% of customers, and certainly, I fully support the reconstitution, reconstituted RSA with that three to two Orange County majority, entering into an agreement with Madison to make sure that those customers are served for whatever period of time, it seems reasonable to Madison County. Perhaps forever, but at least for five years, I understand is their, is their, the mainland of their concern, so. I want, you know, I want Madison County Board of Supervisors, Green County Board of Supervisors to understand that, that this is, you know, we're, we're, this is not a great situation, and we're groping forward, trying to do the best we can with the hand that's been dealt.
Absolutely. Any further comment, discussion? Allison, if you would do a roll call of it, please.
Mr. Crozier.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
And Mr. Marshall. Five zero.
Thank you very much. All right, excuse me. Next is our public hearing number one proceeding, as the cap rates, calendar year 2022. For the calendar year 2022. Mr. Roy Harris, would you look to, to announce?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, you'll recall, we had a detailed, but expedient PowerPoint presentation at our last meeting, where we went over the highlights of the budget, the highlights of revenues, highlights of expenditures, and also discussed the tax rates. These matters have been advertised publicly in the Orange County Review. The only notable change on the tax rate is adjusting the mobile home tax rate to conform to the rest of our real property tax rates. So, other than that, all the tax rates stay the same, so, given that, and the fact that we, we don't have an audience here this evening, sitting in here, who's eager to, to go through all that, we would refer any interested parties to our agenda attachments, which, which do outline this information, and certainly, if anybody watching at home wants more information, they're free to contact us, we do have those documents available for public review. With that, I would thank again Glenda Bradley for all her work, and thank the Board Budget Guidance Committee, and would be available to answer any questions.
Any questions of the county administrator? Open the public hearing. Ms. Simpson, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Close the public hearing. All right, we will move on to public hearing number two.
Mr. Chairman, I just thought of the same comments that I did for public hearing number one, they are related.
Okay, very good. Ms. Simpson, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, we do not.
Open the public hearing. No one, close the public hearing. And at this point, I would need one more motion.
What would that motion be?
I believe it's two. Chairman.
Okay, I have a comment, a re-comment to make.
Absolutely.
For adjournment, then that's why, I just want to point out that contained in this budget is a, a increase in the work salary affected next year, and just didn't want anyone to think we were hiding that. It's been probably about a decade and a half since there was any adjustment made, and so the decision was made to, to adjust it up this year, and I just wanted that out there.
Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Simpson. All right, with that being said, I would entertain one more motion. Mr. Crozier.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You are adjourned.